Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us today. It's another beautiful day in Douglas County. My late father always used to say that this time of year is usually the best in Colorado. I'm a fifth-generation Coloradan, and I tend to agree with that. So I hope you're enjoying this great weather as we start heading into fall here. But before we begin a really pretty exciting agenda today, we're going to be talking a little bit about our 20th anniversary of the Douglas County Youth Initiative. I know many of you are here for that, as well as a national award that was received by the county through the Care Compact, through the National Association of Counties. Lots to celebrate. But before we do that, unfortunately, a bit of a challenging moment for all of us as a family in Douglas County. We did recently lose our chief deputy treasurer, Tanya Burnside. And I know many of you knew her, worked with her, and had the opportunity to serve alongside her. So it is with very heavy hearts that we mourn her passing. And I would invite Darren Kessler to come up and pray on behalf of the county for her loss. Darren?
Thank you. Please join me. Heavenly Father, we thank you that we can acknowledge you as a father, and we pray for Tanya Burnside, for her soul. We thank you for your love and care for her. We pray for your receiving of her. And we pray, Lord, for family, friends, and the county and those coworkers for this loss. We pray that they would have the support that they need, help those in leadership to provide the support and to access the support. And we just pray, Lord, for her, family, friends, and the county and many in this building over her loss. Thank you. And I pray for this meeting, for the Commissioners and each of the other leaders. We thank you that they have desired to ask for your guidance and wisdom. And we're humbled by that, and we are thankful. And I thank you for this opportunity to ask for your presence to be here of guidance over leadership, and that everyone would know that we are accountable to a sovereign God who is ultimately in charge. Thank you. In your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Darren, thank you so much for that. And again, we greatly appreciate that, and our hearts go out to the entire Treasurers Department. Phenomenal group of public service individuals that have had no break in continuity. The services continue even in the midst of some really challenging times for all of them. So thank you again for that. With that, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of the agenda today?
You do, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over all these matters.
Great, thank you. And do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda?
No, sir.
No.
And I don't either. Before we move to Item 2, Ceremonies and Proclamations, I'll just ask at the top if there's any Commissioner comment, any comments from the Commissioners.
No comments at this time, Chair.
Well, thank you. I will say we're coming off a record-setting county fair recently, and I just wanted to thank all of our citizens for attending and making it truly one of the best county fairs that we've had in a very long time, probably since the one we had the year before. But sellout crowds to all the rodeos, the farm-to-table, and all of our great events. Really appreciate the work of our young people at the Junior Livestock Auction that have spent over a year raising animals and then selling them for charity at that livestock auction. They did a wonderful job and raised a lot of money. With that, we'll move on to our ceremonies and proclamations, beginning with Item 2A. Our first is a resolution proclaiming August 11th through 15th, 2025, as Douglas County Youth Week in celebration of the 20th anniversary of the Douglas County Youth Initiative. And I'll turn it to Carolyn Frisell to present, and Marcia Austin, I believe. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Marcia Austin with the Douglas County Youth Initiative. Thank you so much for having us today to celebrate this monumental occasion. I believe we have a video that we would like to start with for today's presentation.
Okay, thanks, Marcia. To all who have participated, engaged, and worked in the Douglas County Youth Initiative over the last 20 years, thank you. On behalf of Douglas County and the 400,000 people we represent, particularly the youth, and I'd like to extend a special thanks to the amazing Marcia Austin, who has been with us for years as the Director, leading, guiding, and mentoring the future.
Thank you for all that you guys do. Happy 20th anniversary, DCYI.
Congratulations, Douglas County Youth Initiative. 20 years, many more to come. It's great. It's awesome, and it's beautiful.
Happy 20th anniversary, Douglas County Youth Initiative. Woo-hoo! Let's go for 20 more years!
Happy 20th anniversary to the Douglas County Youth Initiative, and thank you for all you do for our community.
Congratulations on 20 years of the Youth Initiative. Incredible what we've done in 20 years, and I look forward to the next 20. This county is better off for what that small little room of people does every month to create a better community for us all. Thank you to the Douglas County Youth Initiative.
Congratulations, DCYI, on your 20th year anniversary.
Happy 20th anniversary, team. You've done great work, and I can't wait to see what we're going to do over the next 20 years. Keep it going.
Thank you so much to the county's wonderful communications team for putting that video together. Seeing so many of those photographs has just been wonderful to celebrate. So we do have a resolution. I'm not sure if you'd like for me to read that, or Commissioner Layden, as you are the Chair of the Youth Initiative. Would you like for me?
Well, I'd be honored and humbled if you read it, Marcia, as our amazing Director.
Thank you. And thank you so much for your kind words in that video. That's very appreciated.
Well, I mean, for those that don't know, I mean, the heart and soul of the Youth Initiative really is Marcia Austin. And if it were not for her passion for serving the kids in our community, we would not have had the successes we've had. She's done a tremendous job, so truly huge thanks. I know we get to, we also get to thank you at a very special event. I hope you'll share a little bit more about those details as well.
Yes, yes. I'll do that first, so I don't forget. This coming Friday at the MAC here in Castle Rock, at 4 o'clock, we will be celebrating the 20th anniversary of the Youth Initiative. And everybody should really write this down, because there's going to be free ice cream. And one of the flavors is Dr. Pepper with chocolate chips. So there's going to be some, it's not just vanilla and strawberry, folks. We're going full out. We're very excited to have this opportunity to invite previous board members and supporters of the Youth Initiative, and also our youth commissions as well. And so, everybody, please come and join us. There are going to be yard games. And so, Doug, I would hope you were going to do the giant jenga with us all. So I'd like to maybe wager and see who can win that. So I would like, I would appreciate that. So please, please join us for that special occasion, and we're all very excited. And also, before the resolution, if you are a previous or current participant of the Youth Initiative, either by being staff, or on their advisory board, or a youth commission, could you please stand up? And I'd like to honor you all with a nice round of applause. Thank you so much for all you do for us. We're very lucky and fortunate to have elected officials be on our advisory board, which Commissioner Layden is Chair of. So we have elected officials from Parker and Castle Rock, Lone Tree, the libraries, the school district, Highlands Ranch Metro, and Castle Pines. So we could not do this without you, without your support. So I will now read that resolution. It's a resolution proclaiming August 11th through the 15th, 2025, as Douglas County Youth Week in celebration of the 20th anniversary of the Douglas County Youth Initiative. Whereas in 2005, visionary leaders from across Douglas County came together with a shared goal to better serve the children and families of the county, giving rise to the creation of the Douglas County Youth Initiative. And whereas the Douglas County Youth Initiative, guided by a dedicated advisory board of community partners, has served as unifying platform to strengthen youth development, leadership, civic engagement, and family support across the country, county, maybe the country, but the county. And whereas over the past 20 years, the Douglas County Youth Initiative has impacted the lives of more than 3,000 young people in our community, fostering resilience, opportunity, and empowerment for youth from all walks of life. And whereas programs such as Youth Congress, local youth commissions, and wraparound support services have given youth a voice in civic matters and provided direct assistance to families navigating challenges at school, at home, or in accessing critical services. And whereas initiatives such as La Liga soccer, mentoring, mental health support, and educational advocacy continue to ensure that every young person in Douglas County has access to caring adults, community resources, and meaningful opportunities to grow and thrive. And whereas the strength and success of the Douglas County Youth Initiative is rooted in enduring partnerships with the town of Castle Rock, Parker, Lone Tree, Castle Pines, Douglas County Libraries, the Douglas County School District, and the Highlands Ranch Metro District, among others. And whereas Douglas County is proud to recognize and honor the outstanding youth Commissioners and leaders from across our communities who represent the future of public service and civic engagement. And whereas the Board of Douglas County Commissioners expresses its sincere gratitude to the current and former members of the Douglas County Youth Initiative Advisory Board for their steadfast dedication and service, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, that the week of August 11th through the 15th, 2025, is hereby proclaimed as Douglas County Youth Week in celebration of the 20th anniversary of the Douglas County Youth Initiative and in recognition of the transformative impact this initiative has had and will continue to have on the lives of Douglas County youth and families. I believe this was passed and adopted. I give that over to you for the resolution.
Well, thank you for that. I think we do have to pass and adopt that here. That's part of our business today. But I'll ask if there's any member of the Youth Initiative here today that would like to speak. Yes, please. And we know you, but if you want to just state your name and where you're from?
Hello, my name is Preston Kanter. I'm a junior at Rock Canyon High School. And I just want to say thank you so much to the community and the Board of County Commissioners for their impact. We really couldn't do this without you guys. And I really want to say, like, we, it is such an honor being able to serve the community in this capacity, and we couldn't have done it without the support from the community, the partnership with Douglas County Governments. And we're really grateful for every, all the support that you guys have provided us, all the resources. And just couldn't be, couldn't be more thankful on behalf of the other youth Commissioners for everything that you guys have done. So thank you so much.
Thanks for being here, Preston. We appreciate that. Any additional comments? Well, I would be remiss if I didn't highlight a couple of really important folks. They're all very important to the Youth Initiative. But I do see an amazing civic servant named Josh Rivero, who also happens to be the current mayor of Parker, has been a council member, knows government inside and out, but also was a past chairman of the Youth Initiative. And I know we're standing on the shoulders of giants, being able to carry this forward through your leadership. And I know you're very passionate about youth, Josh. So thank you so much for being here, Mayor. We greatly appreciate that. Also want to recognize the work of wraparound. I mean, we talked about so many of the great programs that Youth Initiative does, but on a day-to-day, full-time basis, the wraparound professionals are committed to working with at-risk youth, especially when it comes to truancy and challenges that young people face every single day. And your hearts are so big, and you're so committed to the work that you do. So thank you for all of that. We really appreciate you guys. With that, I want to open it up for any questions or comments from the Board.
I've just always wanted to say this, so I'll just say, Marcia, Marcia, Marcia.
You're going to get that reference.
You took my opportunity. I am a man of a certain age, so I get that. Hey, great job. Great job with this. But more specifically, thanks to all the advisory board members over the years. I mean, you know, obviously, having served at the municipal level, I always heard the reports coming from our liaisons and advisory board members, and fantastic work that's been done for years. And to all you youngsters, past and present, who have been involved in the Youth Initiative, great job. You're doing great work out there. And I hope you're learning a little something, working with your county government, because, you know, you may be required to use it at some point in time in the future. But well done, Marcia. I don't know how we would be here on this day were it not for your personal efforts and your personal work for the youth of Douglas County.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Van Winkle?
Yeah, I just want to say ditto. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for all the participants in the Board. I interacted largely in my previous role at the Capitol when the Youth Initiative and Youth Congress would come to the Capitol. And that's something that kind of exposed Douglas County's young people to kind of the entire state of Colorado in a sense. So thank you for the tremendous impact. We have so many great groups in Douglas County that serve our youth, serve our seniors, our special needs, and this is another one that we can't just, that we need to highlight. We need to take a moment, pause, and just say thank you, because it's had a tremendous, tremendous impact on youth, on families. And it was, I'm also glad to see Preston here from Rock Canyon High School to say a few words. Very well done, young man.
Yeah, absolutely. And just to add some color and maybe provide some stories around the Youth Initiative for those that might not be familiar. When Kevin talks about Youth Congress, it's no joke. It's literally hundreds and hundreds of students from all over Douglas County, from every school, private charter, parochial, coming to the Capitol. And frankly, our current Commissioner, former Senator Van Winkle, was instrumental in securing some space at the Capitol for us in the past. We're going to lean on him again this year to see if we can get that done. But a great opportunity for students to go down to our state's Capitol and really talk about issues that are deeply important to them, whether it's mental health, or substance abuse, or even things like keeping bathrooms open in their schools. That's always, we joke, but it always comes up. It's something that's very important to them. In addition to that, the Youth Awards are really significant. And I think when you hear Youth Awards, you're probably having a picture in your mind of, like, the valedictorian and the captain of the cheerleading squad. Those are really great students, and we appreciate their achievements, but this is not that. This is really those kids who have overcome incredible odds in their lives, whether it's the loss of a parent, overcoming bullying, overcoming substance abuse, you know, issues that are really deeply intrinsic to their own mental health. We are awarding kids for their perseverance. And it's, it's a tough night, because we have a lot of boxes of Kleenex, and we go through them all. But they come in with their recommenders, who are usually from law enforcement, or teachers, or counselors, and people in the community, and it's a very special night. So Marcia puts all of that together, in addition to the La Liga soccer program, which is usually non-native English speakers that don't necessarily have normal recreational outlets, and they get to play soccer. I think that was one of my, the first things I did seven years ago is go play soccer at La Liga. So thank you for that. With all that, I would love to give a big round of applause to Marcia and the team. And I think we'll take a picture if we do this. I don't see this on our business meeting actions, but I do believe I will need a motion to pass the resolution proclaiming August 11th through 15th as the celebration. If anybody would like to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and second on the floor to have a resolution proclaiming August 11th through 15th, 2025, as Douglas County Youth Week in celebration of the 20th anniversary of the Douglas County Youth Initiative. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries unanimously. Yay! All right. So if you are a member of the Youth Initiative or have been connected with the Youth Initiative, if you'll join us up front, Drew will coordinate us for a photo. All right, lots of fun. Please join us on Friday for ice cream, too, if you want to celebrate with all of us. We're going to move on to our second item under Ceremonies and Proclamations, which is also pretty fun. It's Item 2B, the Care Compact 2025 National Association of Counties Achievement Award Recognition. We have Leandra Montoya, Care Compact Supervisor, presenting for staff. Hi, Leandra.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We also have a video that we would like to show today, if that's okay with you all.
Sure.
I'm Pam Roar. I am the Adult Care Compact Navigator here in Douglas County under the Mental Health Division. My role is to provide complex care coordination and bring together a team of agencies to help provide resources and supports for individuals that are needing it in the community that have mental health issues, substance abuse issues, intellectual or developmental disabilities. And we pull together a care team. Mom just reached out to me via text. The client is like the center of a wheel, and each of the folks that we put on for the care team are like the spokes of that wheel. I provide interim case management for the individual until we get those care teams established. And then my role is to oversee all those spokes. So as a wheel, I am the outer tire and holding everybody close together. One of the things I like to do as the navigator is to assist folks with obtaining public benefits that they may be available and approved for. So I'm going to go talk to customer service and submit an application. But as the navigator, I'm very client-centered at helping that client get the supports and services that they're needing and working with community partners to make that happen. This is our food pantry. We sign out for how many, how many individuals that we serve that may be needing food in the moment. We have quilts that have been donated to us. And so today, we have a single person that is needing some food items. So the Care Compact was recently awarded an achievement award from the National Association of Counties. The letter that was presented was written by a family that their adult child was one of my clients. "We are writing to express our sincere gratitude for Pam's invaluable knowledge, guidance, patience, and ability in order to help our son." Ms. Roar is a dedicated, loyal, knowledgeable, able, and needed person in the Douglas County community. She deserves great recognition, not only for how, but going the extra mile. We are furthermore indebted to her and have never met anyone this willing and able to help her son. He is thriving right now, continuing his treatment, and has been approved and is finally receiving his social security benefits. Bless Pam Roar and the Care Compact team. This is a collective effort with community partners, from mental health to benefits, to food banks, to law enforcement partners, to all individuals that we may connect with someone. And so to make, to make someone's life, making a difference, we are making a difference. And it's really good to be recognized from families that we have made a difference. And this, this program is important to the community, to the individuals that live here in the community, and just making it a better place.
Wonderful. Leandra, thank you for that. Anything else you wanted to share about the Care Compact?
I'd love to say a few words of thanks, if that's okay with you all. The National Association of Counties Achievement Award in the Human Services category recognizes innovative and effective county government programs that enhance services for residents. This award highlights programs that address critical human service needs, demonstrating excellence in public service and improving community well-being. On behalf of the entire Care Compact network, I am deeply grateful to the Board of County Commissioners, all of our partner leadership, and the National Association of Counties for recognizing us and being a part of this work. Back in 2020, leaders across the state were highlighting this need for care coordination and recognizing problematic gaps and silos in the mental health care system, particularly failing those with complex needs. Yet Douglas County has been on the cutting edge of addressing this issue. With care coordination being a top priority for the BHA, the Douglas County Mental Health Collaborative understood that while no agency alone can fix this problem, together we can transform care for our most vulnerable residents. In 2020, the Care Compact was developed by a network of dedicated partners to provide enhanced care coordination for adults with mental health needs, substance use disorders, and intellectual and developmental disabilities. For over 200 individuals, it has provided comprehensive support, streamlined access to services, and lessened unnecessary reliance on emergency services, improving overall well-being. This program is dedicated to serving people involved in multiple systems, particularly those with co-occurring needs and disabilities, by offering tailored support and adaptive services to meet their needs and improve the overall quality of life and autonomy. The Care Compact works closely with co-responders, including CRT and Heart, to improve stability, public safety, and supportive care in times of crisis and housing insecurity. The program holistically addresses crisis and unmet basic needs by collectively targeting safety and stability with appropriate community-based services. The program has successfully reduced CRT crisis calls 87%, by 87% six months after completing the program. It's also been shown to reduce adult protection reports, lessen law enforcement calls, and emergency department visits. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to my heartfelt thanks to our county officials, county staff, including the wonderful Pam Roar, our Adult Care Compact Navigator, and our partner organizations who have supported this work every step of the way. Most importantly, I want to thank the residents of Douglas County, whose trust and participation have been the driving force behind these efforts. We are inspired by your resilience and your stories, and we are committed to continuing to serve you with the highest level of care and compassion. Thanks so much again for this honor.
Thank you. How about a round of applause for Leandra? Would anybody else from the Care Compact care to speak? Pam? It was great to hear your story up there. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to hear and understand more about what you do. You know, I wonder for the listening public that may not be familiar with, you know, the Mental Health Collaborative or the Care Compact, can you walk us through a hypothetical for just, you know, a regular resident that may not be super familiar with it? Maybe, you know, what would happen if you had a child with suicidal ideation at 2:00 in the morning that maybe had some co-occurring issues, dual diagnosis, and then how would they enter into the program and how would that be navigated?
Yeah, so the Care Compact could be accessed in a variety of different ways. We also, since you spoke about youth, we also just developed a youth care compact program that was piloted over the last year and officially launched about a month ago after our program evaluation and a presentation to the Douglas County Mental Health Collaborative Steering Committee. But for those who are interested in accessing this level of care coordination, it would really be about whether you have a mental health need, substance use disorder, or intellectual and developmental disability, as well as having needs that fall beyond just what one agency can provide in terms of services. So you might think, you know, you have some, a son with a disability, a disabling condition such as a serious mental illness, who is continuing to cycle through the crisis system of care, having law enforcement respond, going to the emergency room, but not quite getting the care that he needs to stabilize in the community. And so the Care Compact could be referred by one of our partners, such as CRT or Heart, or you could refer your family member yourself through our county website. What we would do is really Pam would do an intake with you to identify what the needs are, where we could pull in partners to develop this individualized care team to meet those needs. So it might be that developmental pathways can help address some of the disability services that might benefit you to help support your stability in the community and help you stay independent. It might also identify mental health services through our all-health partner, who is our community mental health center, which we can kind of pull in peer support services, case management that are community-based, that can go out and meet with you in the home, help fill out applications, attend appointments with you or your loved one if needed. We may also partner with our eligibility staff to help kind of process applications if there's any benefits that you might qualify for, and also help you look at what other services or supports you might be eligible for, to really reduce that need to rely on the crisis system and have those supportive services more available to you on an outpatient basis. So it kind of helps people feel more secure and safe and have people to call that aren't 911 in the moment. So that's a little bit about how you can access us.
Thank you for that summary. I really appreciate that. I'm going to open it up to the board for questions and comments. But I'll just add, you know, mental health and the Mental Health Collaborative has been a really important priority for the county for several years now. And it's really, I think, bifurcating between two hypotheticals. One is you have an emergency and a lot of people will just call 911. And, you know, that's a great number. That's what it's there for. It's for public safety, and they're there to respond. But the alternative to lights and sirens in front of your house and, you know, getting involved perhaps in the criminal justice system, is to have a network of professionals right here in Douglas County that are prepared to stand alongside you and your family during a very difficult crisis. And I think it is monumental. It's the good news you'll never hear about. I often say that. But the number of families that you've been able to walk through the system in a positive, affirming way that gives them the dignity to be able to step forward is really powerful. A lot of people may not know this, but I think you've heard about the Heart Team, our Homeless Engagement Assistance Resource Team, which is two professionals, law enforcement paired with a navigator. That was born from the Co-Response Team out of the Mental Health Initiative. It was working so well, particularly with youth, that we decided to model our homeless response after what's happening here. So a lot of good things have come out of the Care Compact, and we're continuing to see that benefit. I know going into the future, a big hope for us is to improve and increase community referral, so that any citizen can access, you know, the co-responder teams and the Care Compact so that they can navigate. I often say as a commissioner, it's the neighbor rule. Does your next-door neighbor, if you ask them and said, "Hey, do you know what the Care Compact is?", would they say yes or no? And if it's no, then we need to do a better job of letting them know so that they have that at their fingertips. But really exciting. Board, any questions or comments about the Care Compact?
No, Mr. Chair. I just want to, I'm so glad that we take these moments to say thank you and shine the light and appreciate the hard work that's being done, because this is truly where the rubber meets the road. It's where it truly runs into where government, professionals, nonprofits come together to meet that family or that person in their time of, perhaps a time of greatest need and greatest stress. And no two people are the same, no two problems are the same, no two families are the same. And this is such an innovative compact that we have here in Douglas County that really helps people and elevates them in a time of need, gets them through it, and really makes Douglas County as a whole a better community, makes Douglas County families stronger. So my sincere thanks from the bottom of my heart, and keep up the great work, and we are here to support you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Till?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Hey, congratulations. I mean, this national recognition here. And, you know, we could talk about, was this the right fit for Douglas County? And I think a lot of us will feel like this was the right fit for a program that is taking care of issues that other jurisdictions on the Front Range and throughout Colorado, they struggle to even start to address it. And here you guys are performing oh-so-well, gaining national recognition before our peers, which, thank you very much. I think that's great. But you guys just really deserve a great deal of the credit here. Now, you deserve all the credit here. Yeah, this was a program that I feel fortunate to have inherited when I came on the board, and it's been one that ever since I started hearing the results that we're producing, I've done everything I could to support it. So I did, it's great, guys. Congratulations. Well done. Take a victory lap. Be at work next morning. We're counting on you, please. And thanks for making us all look good.
A huge round of applause for the Care Compact. Great job, you guys. If you are involved with the Care Compact, join us up front, and we'll take a brief photo.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Every day, a member of the Department gets to take the trophy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So we take persons on vacation, took it out of the stadium.
So I told Kevin, the guy's got three people on the table today.
Like this, but you rotate around your department, the person's on vacation, took it out of the stadium.
I'm going to break protocol. I know the people on the mics can't hear me, but I said this upstairs, Care Compact would not have happened without Laura Sincomi. Can we give her a big round of applause?
Yes.
on to our Consent Agenda, which is Item 3 on our agenda for today. I will accept a motion.
Chair, please. The board, I do have a motion approved. The requests in all items, A through S, and U through AF of the Consent Agenda, Item T is pulled from the agenda.
I second the motion.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. With that, we'll move on to our regular agenda items, and we have A, B, and C for today. Today's first regular agenda item is Item 4A. It's a request to approve a public contract for services and funding for Valley Hope of Parker in the amount of $100,000. Maureen Waller, Special Projects Manager, presenting for staff. Hi, Maureen.
Hello. Good afternoon. There are three items today related to the opioid settlement. I'd like to talk about them all kind of together. The first one is Valley Hope, and I'm here today to request the board's approval of the public contract for services for $100,000 for Valley Hope of Parker. The Region 12 Opioid Council voted to award this funding, and as the fiscal agent, the county needs to approve the contract and then release the funds. This grant is important because without a safe and supportive place to live after treatment, many people relapse. Sober Living offers structure, accountability, and community while individuals rebuild their lives. These grant funds will go directly to sober living providers and are reserved for patients with documented financial need. Sober Living in Douglas County averages about $1,100 a month. Valley Hope's fund is consistently depleted. The grant is going to help at least 90 low-income residents successfully transition from treatment into stable recovery. The opioid council had recommended the funding, and I'm looking for the board to approve it so we can go ahead and get them some money and get help people into sober living. We have Rebecca from Valley Hope here, if the board wishes, if she wishes to hear from her.
Yes, that'd be great. And maybe before we do that, for the listening public that may not be familiar with the opioid council, do you want to provide a little background on what that is and what it does?
Sure. I think back in, is it 2021, maybe, the state approved the MOU, statewide MOU, and almost every county, I think, believe every county and almost every municipality joined in on that settlement. And that settlement is going to be used for all future settlements in the county, in the country, that come for opioid, opioid abuse settlement for distributors and manufacturers of opioids. And I think it's up to like $800 million that the state is expected to receive over the next 18 years for the opioid settlement. And the money, the negotiation for the MOU went on for a long time, and was, the vast majority of the money is coming to local governments through regions. And Douglas County is its own region. We're Region 12, and all the county and all the municipalities in the county are a part of that. So 60% of the statewide funds come directly to Region 12, 20% go to the local governments themselves. And in Douglas County, all of the local governments, all the local governments entirely within the county have allocated those dollars to our region. So we're getting even more money. 10% of the money is going to the attorney, to the state, and 10% is for an infrastructure, a statewide infrastructure program. We have one of those coming up as well. So we have a Region 12 Opioid Council made up of representatives from all of our local governments, and we have a great advisory board made up of subject matter experts. We meet monthly to prioritize the areas that need the most funding and really are working, hopefully as quickly as we can, to get some money into the hands of organizations that are really making a difference in people's lives.
Great memory and great summary. That is fantastic. Do we have any members of our opioid council here with us today? There he is. We have my distinguished co-chair, Roger Hudson, who serves very well in the city of Castle Pines, but does sort of double, triple, quadruple duty as a public servant, and this is a really significant and big lift. So Roger, tremendous thanks to you for being here. And I see a lot of advisors and friends of the opioid council. I'm really honored to co-chair that with Roger. And, you know, when we were going through the MOU process with the AG, we really fought to make Douglas County its own region. Originally, the map had us lumped in with kind of the Denver metro area and
The whole eastern, eastern part of the state.
A lot of the eastern part of the state. And we said, you know, we might want to just kind of do our own thing. And thankfully, that was accepted. The MOU was adopted, and that has been a real blessing that has paid off for us. We'll see conceivably north of $25 million just in Douglas County over the next 15 to 18 years. And those big pharma settlements continue to grow. So it's an important group, a lot of good funding to address, substance use disorder, and it's, part of what we're doing today is getting that money out, which does get approved by the board.
And that one of our items on consent today was the Purdue Pharma-Sackler family settlement, that that had just come in. That was a long-awaited
Yeah.
one, and that was just approved. So we're approving those participation forms for that as well.
Yeah.
So a big day for opioid funding today.
Big day for opioid abuse treatment funding, for sure. With that, let me ask if the board has any questions for staff. Okay, no questions for staff. Let me ask if there's any member of the public that would like to comment on this item before the board today. Yes, ma'am? If you want to just state your name and where you're from. I think we know you, but we'll just state that for the record.
First of all, I have to thank the cowboys who put on that. I went alone to that thing first time, been in a rodeo, and I was like in heaven. I bought this hat there. So, and I also watched the cowboys, like, with the little suave calves come out. They looked like they were washed in suave shampoo. And I'm like, what? Those are cared-for animals and cute. I was going to kidnap one, but I thought, oh, too many people watching. Better than my baby.
And we appreciate that. I will ask if you can keep your comments to the agenda item.
I will. I just want to thank you. I think it's appropriate to thank them. They put on an incredible
They did.
thing. So the second thing, I've got four things. The second thank you. That's a beautiful facility. I looked up to date. That's like the homeless urban peak down in Denver, the Alpha Bellevue, that we struggled for 14 years to support that building, and it's beautiful for the teenagers. We have lots of needs. We've got lots of people who need things, and I think it's wonderful to support that. $100,000 hardly sounds like a pebble in a lake for what we need for that. But thank you. And one more comment, two more, but one more. I was watching, so I saw something briefly, Commissioner laid in that you were doing with benzodiazepine. I can't watch all you guys are doing, because there's a lot. But, so that's essential. We talked about the opioid crisis, and I spoke about the Time Magazine, when it's called polymedicine, polypharmacy. So from the UK, we're paying $1,100 for the same drug. In Europe, they're paying for 100. They have dominance in the market. So thank God Trump's at the head of the world leader, even if we don't like some of the way it looks, blood, gore, and lots of deception and betrayal. But I think a global economy shift and settlement, it'll hurt a lot, but it'll hurt more if we don't settle this global war of trade and tariffs. Thank God we have people smart enough to try to push forward in that. Fourth thing, thank you so much. My heart is full today for the community response teams and all the great people in this county that stand by each other regardless of how low we fall. I thank God for the many, many people that have come to my home through betrayal of doctors and other people in my life, have stolen much, much money, broken in my house, and all the crap that I've
Ma'am, we do appreciate this comment, but I'm going to ask you to restrain your comment to the public contract for services.
The truth is the truth, okay?
Okay.
And that's what I'm saying. There is truth to what I'm speaking, and I say it's a great network here. And with the homeless initiative, the Heart, I can speak personally because I've used your resources and I've supported your Heart Team more than I've worked for anyone. So I appreciate the intellect in this county, the lawyer, the army man, and I'm sorry for the little King's poster they put on, King's on Your Head. That's inappropriate. This is not a platform or not a destruction of our people. It's a working through civilly in a great county with no debt.
Ma'am, thank you for that. Appreciate your comments. Oh, it's okay. Appreciate your comments. Additional citizen comment? Yes, sir. We know you as well, very well. If you want to state your name and where you're from for the record.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Joshua Rivero. I have the honor of being the mayor of Parker. Just like to get us back on topic if it could, and recognizing Parker Valley Hope. This is a bastion of healing that happens at the edge of Parker. Not a lot of folks know about it, but they are incredibly well-integrated into our community. They sit amongst the timbers, under two powerful churches, but also next to one of the strongest neighborhoods in our community, Canterbury. The work that happens in that building is absolutely amazing. And it's work that happens out here in the suburbs, what people don't really think about. They don't really know what goes on. I applaud you today. I applaud the opioid commission for funding $100,000 to this organization. This organization is well-deserved, and I think it's rather happenstance and maybe a little bit of a little bit of providence that I'm here today for youth initiative, and this happens to be passing. So well-deserved, and I'm glad you guys are looking at it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, mayor. We're honored by your presence. Additional citizen comment? Yes, sir. We know our distinguished co-chair, but if you want to state your name and where you're from for the record?
I'm Roger Hudson. I'm the city councilman for Castle Pines, also honored to be a city councilman and serve. This is not only just for you guys, but also for staff and our attorney. They have worked so closely with us on the council. They make everything happen for us, a great liaison to the public. And, you know, the interesting thing is I talk to people every single day about the council and the work that we do. We forget of how many people it really affects, our neighbors and our families. If you haven't been affected by addiction, then either you've not met the person who's addicted, or it might be yourself, or it may be someday yourself. And the nonprofits that we work with are amazing people. They are so driven to give grace and to educate, to prevent, and to hopefully treat addiction in our county. I am so humbled to work with them every single day, and you, Commissioner Layden, you've been a great chair. I would ask that we all have grace, the same grace our nonprofits do. You never know what's going on in someone's home. You never know what someone else is going through, especially in Douglas County. We're so fortunate. I would say that this organization, this group of people giving money to nonprofits to do amazing work is so Douglas County. Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Councilmember Hudson. And, you know, your work as a lawyer, a communications professional, and with capital letters, I think you've done both of those professions quite honorably, and serving the public has been very significant. So thank you for that. Any additional citizen comment on this item? Okay, I'm going to move online. Troy, any citizen comment online with regard to this item?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, so with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would move to approve the request to approve public contract for service and funding for Valley Hope and Parker in the amount of $100,000.
I have to confess, I'm still a little shocked to see the mayor of Parker here in a non-lumberjack-looking-
Long pants.
And long pants.
Not shorts, wow.
And by the way, there was a time when we were compatriots because I was in a Hawaiian shirt and shorts all the time, but good to, Josh, good to see we both had our wives dress us, I guess. I don't know. I'm happy to second.
Thank you for that first and second. And as chair, I'm going to pause and recognize Valley Hope. I did ask for citizen comment, but we'd love to have you come up and speak if you're interested. Yes, please.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Rebecca Bresson, and I have the honor of working for Valley Hope. We do drug and alcohol addiction recovery services in an inpatient center. Mayor, thank you so much for your kind words. And Councilman Hudson and Commissioner Layden, I'm honored to work with all of you to support the citizens in Douglas County. These funds are, I can't even express how beneficial they are to the patients that come to us. As many people know, inpatient treatment is just the first step in a very long and lifelong journey, and we lean very heavily on our community partners to continue that journey with these individuals that come to us. Hard Beauty is here, and Raquel and her team do an amazing job, and so do many of the sober livings that we work with. As many people who come to us don't have jobs or homes, and when they are ready to leave treatment, they don't have a safe place to go. They don't have a place where it is supportive of their journey and supportive of making sure that they don't relapse. So these funds allow us to make sure that that connection continues to happen. I would love to thank you, the Board of County Commissioners, for supporting not only the ROAC, but also Valley Hope, and also to all of my colleagues here who do the work with us. We are grateful for all of your support in the opioid epidemic and supporting those who are struggling with addiction. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for being a great partner and for all of your work. It's an honor to serve with you. So with that, we do have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. With that, we're going to move on to the next item in our regular agenda, which is item 4B, a request to approve a public contract for services and $340,422.14 in funding for Hard Beauty LLC's peer support initiative. Maureen Waller, once again, presenting for staff.
Hello, again. Actually, if it's okay, I'd like to talk about item C first. So they're related, so both of the items are for the same program. They're Hard Beauty's peer support initiative.
So, Maureen, what I'm going to do then, just for the record, is we're going to go ahead as a board and take up both item B and item C, which is a request to approve the distribution of $226,647.76 opioid settlement infrastructure grant to Hard Beauty. You can proceed.
That's great. Yeah, they're directly linked, and yeah, so that's for the, to place the peer recovery coaches in the Douglas County jail and the Sky Ridge Medical Center. The coaches are going to provide in-jail recovery support, bedside assistance in the ER, discharge planning, connections to long-term care. The goal is to reduce recidivism, improve outcomes for people in crisis, and build a replicable model for use across the state. So item C is the $226,647.76 from the Colorado Opioid Abatement Council's infrastructure grant program. That's that 10% we just mentioned for the last item that's held aside. And that is a competitive grant process that the state makes calls for periodically. There were 46 applicants, only 12 received funds, and Hard Beauty was one of them, and they were awarded the $226,000. And as the county is the fiscal agent, and only local governments are allowed to apply for those statewide infrastructure grants, so we apply on their behalf. The county has already received the monies, so now this agenda item is to formally turn those funds over, award the money, and turn those funds over to Hard Beauty. And we can, I don't know if the board wants to approve that, or do you want me to talk about the second part simultaneously? Either way.
Yeah, if you want to just go ahead and brief the board on both B and C, we'll take up each motion.
Perfect. Item B is asking the board for the $340,000 grant, and that's from a Region 12 to provide some local funding for the same initiative. And while it's, there's no, there was no match required, it's kind of a voluntary match that the regional council thought would be wise, and it's going to allow the program to serve even more people and to operate for a longer term, longer period of time. So together, these two grants represent an investment of $567,000 in recovery services for our community. So asking for the board to approve both of those. I know we have Raquel from Hard Beauty and a number of members from her team who are here, so they're, I'm sure, willing to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Maureen. Raquel and team, if you want to come up and join us at the podium? Or not, whatever you'd like to do.
I was like, you're really going to leave me up here by myself?
Hi, Raquel.
Hi, Commissioner. We see each other again. Hello, commissioners. First of all, I want to say thank you. On behalf of Hard Beauty, I want to express our deepest gratitude, first of all, for your belief in us, your trust in us, and your commitment to seeing our work succeed. This support means more than funding. It's a recognition of the vital role we, as people with lived experience, right here at home play. We work here, we live here, and we are deeply invested in the health and future of Douglas County. This funding doesn't just support individuals facing substance use and mental health challenges. It strengthens families, supports systems, and sustains meaningful jobs for people with lived experience. We are proud to employ team members who have walked the road themselves and now use that experience to guide others toward recovery and stability. Together, we are modeling what true community care and collaboration look like. We are breaking down silos and proving that when we work across systems, we can create the kind of compassionate connection or connected care that changes lives. I also want to applaud you for putting lived experience at the forefront. You recognize that those of us closest to the problem are probably often closest to the solution. That vision, your vision, is helping to change the way communities care for their own. Today is more than a celebration of a grant. It is a celebration of partnership, trust, and shared commitment to a stronger and healthier Douglas County. Thank you for believing in Hard Beauty and for believing in the power of community and change. And I want to say, there's what I wrote, but I also want to applaud these amazing humans that stand with me. You know, I remember when I first came to Douglas County and said I was going to start recovery support services, and people said, well, why did you, why would you go there? I said, well, because I live here, and I'm someone who struggled with a substance use disorder here, and my husband did as well. And mental health is not, doesn't care about what zip code you live in or what county you live in. It affects all of us. And I don't do this work alone. I remember Tiffany was the first one to say yes to help me out. Savannah helped me write my first grant. And this Operation Care Program is actually the one at the hospital is led by Megan White, who runs this. We're the only peer program with contracts in all of Intermountain hospitals, and we're excited because not only are we starting at Sky Ridge, but we also are ending up probably in every health HC1 hospital in the state of Colorado because you said yes in this county. It's a trickle effect, and it happens, and that ripple effect happens across the county. And then I also want to say hello to Elizabeth, who is not only a new employee with us, but also a resident of Douglas County. And so we wanted to show that not only do we, you know, we work here, but we live here, and so you're not just caring for, we help all over the state of Colorado, but really specific to Douglas County. And Commissioner Layden, you were the first person in Douglas County as an official to come and see us when we got our building, and you never hesitated to come in and say hello, and you've been a champion of our work ever since, and so I want to say thank you for that. And also to Roger, thank you so much. Your vulnerability with me has changed my perceptions also. I can come in with my own stigma and bias against those who have a lot more than me, but you've changed my, changed my heart about that, and so I'm looking forward to collaborating with you in the future. So thank you.
Well, this is, this is hard for me because literally, I mean, I just, I look out, and it's, it's hard to not even, to be able to articulate this without getting emotional about it because you, like you said, those who are closest to the problem are often closest to the solution, and I love people that are real, and they're direct, and they're good at getting things done, and that is Raquel Garcia in a nutshell. I will, I don't, I very clearly remember when you, you had the courage to say, hey, Commissioner, come down and see what we're doing at Hard Beauty. And from that first day, it was so obvious to me that you were 100% authentic, willing to share all the challenges that you were facing, the good, the bad, the difficult, the history, and then bring along people alongside you to do that great work. We talked about how we give awards to the kids that have persevered in our community. In my mind, this is the adult version of that, right? This is an award, if we approve it, to, to a group of individuals that are committed to perseverance. There are a lot of successful people that have done a lot of great things in our community, but to get to where you are from where you've been, it's, it's truly remarkable. It is. So I'm so proud of you guys. I'm so excited for this. And I, I mean, what I would, the reason it's, it's a big deal to me, I mean, Raquel talked about what she does in hospitals, and for people that don't know, it's literally that person that is suicidal, that is going through maybe a benzodiazepine withdrawal, hallucinating, doesn't trust doctors, doesn't trust law enforcement. Raquel and her team literally sit at their bedside, hold their hands, and say, listen, you've got this. I'm with you. I've been there. They're not going to trust anybody else other than you. And we know from the evidence that peer support is everything. Having a peer with that lived and experience is top of the list in terms of efficacy. So we like to fund things that work. I love to work with people that work hard and do great things, and that is you all in a nutshell. So Tiffany, Savannah, Megan, Elizabeth, Raquel, thank you for being here. I don't want to get ahead of approval, but I'm really excited to hear this today.
I have one more shout-out. Citizen Duffy is online, and he used to be chief, but Citizen Duffy is online, and he was another first champion, and he actually took the time to just send me a text message to say he's watching, and that just means the world. The community impact has just been amazing, especially in a county where people told me nobody would support us. And so I used to tell people I wasn't really proud to say I lived in Douglas County, but today I'm really, really proud to say I live in Douglas County.
That's awesome. Hi, Kevin. Speaking of Kevins, Commissioner Van Winkle?
Well, Mr. Chairman, honestly, I don't think I can top what you just said. I think we should leave it, or I'm okay leaving it at that and saying ditto, and thank you for your heart and your leadership on the issue.
Thanks. Commissioner Teal?
I'll have comments after.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment. Any citizen comment with regard to this item? Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, I didn't know where we were in the schedule. It's 2:30, so I did break norm to talk about four things and not focus on their, sorry, I apologize, I got late here, so I didn't know where we were at. We're a little over time for where I walked in. Thank you, sorry. But I do want to applaud these women for sitting next to the bedside of someone going through hell with getting off benzodiazepines. That's very rare. Usually, we walk away from those that are put on by doctors, prescriptions, and make them drug addicts. And I can tell you my story. I was raped for two years and then put in psych units, which are jails, two months, three months at a time, and injected with drugs, and that carried on until I was here. And my sorrow was great, greater than you know, because I don't have my daughter that I cared for, and the judge happened against my good soul, started after divorce, the multimillion I supported as a mother 26 years now, and I feel like very empty for what they emptied. Not only my bank account, the stolen from me, and the broken in my house, and raped two more times. And I'll be honest, thank you, men, who have stood by me. And last night, I just reached out to Abe Bladen at 11:30 because the police were knocking on my door trying to save me. I was going to drink, commit suicide last night, and I knew one friend in Abe Bladen, whether he answered or not, was just someone I could think of that I could hang on. One more minute. I've had friends betray me, good friends, ones that I dated and stole money and then used it in subversive ways, more than you know. And I served 1.6 million, it's all true, of my money. I walked into Schwab and served the men and restored businesses and sat with people, suffered a cardiac arrest, the work was hard. I don't need any accolades. It's a mess out there, as we see. And if this trade war doesn't balance, we'll have a great depression, and there is no doubt I've seen too much. Thank you, Steve Callis, for standing by me for two years, calling me on vacation, and I said, I don't want anyone calling me. I stayed in Kansas two and a half months, Missouri, and I have a home over there and paying after a flood, and they walked away. I lived on $1 for three months and stolen from my friends, and I can't believe the shit of this, not the county, the people that are desperate, and they're desperate, so I'll give it to them. If you're desperate, you can be desperate. I'm not desperate. I still can survive. But I'll tell you, I thrived. All my money gone, mostly, I have two more months of alimony, and I don't give a shit. I am a published author, and I'll make it work. And I say shit.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask for you to keep your, please keep your comments professional.
So I was arrested four weeks ago, my arm torn off, illegal. I've never done anything wrong. I've served people, and I've been honest. I lost my daughter to the Mormon church, and they had a state trooper there yesterday after inviting me. First time, 18 months cut me, and I'll stand for truth, and I'll stand against the evil that's out there. My kids are facing it too, right in the front of wars. And I will see my son for the first time in three years and eight months, and his wife. Fucking tour twice. She studied planes and fought wars for you and me. They don't fight wars, they defend and train, and it's only good to be-
Your time has expired. Thank you for sharing those comments with us. Thank you, ma'am. Any additional citizen comment? Do we have any additional citizen comment? Not seeing any citizen comment in the gallery. I will ask for any citizen comment online.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment for you.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for, okay, and I, for the sheriff's office, who's paying attention, sir, if you want to just manage the situation and make sure that things are okay, if you want to to just manage the situation and make sure that things are okay, if you want to just, please step out, make sure that everybody's okay and doing all right. We want to make sure that safety is at the forefront. So closing citizen comment and bringing it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
Chair, well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the ladies from Hard Beauty for coming in and joining us here today to accept this distribution and contract award. You know, we do catch a lot of heat here in the county when we do things that others aren't doing. You know, we do go out on limbs out here in order to do what we believe is the right thing. Actually, what Abe was saying earlier and what you said about taking a chance on you guys. And yeah, there was a little bit of heat that came with that. And here we are today, you know, we talked about our CARE Compact getting national recognition. You know, I know that this is our approval of a contract between our organization, the county, and you guys. And I know we're agreeing to, on the next item, approve the distribution. But guys, this isn't just a local program. This actually isn't a state program. This is a nationwide program. In many ways, the chance that you took all those years ago, and I don't know, we kind of took on you, well, this is national recognition. So Chair, without further ado, if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve, a request to approve a public contract for services of $340,422.14 in funding for Hard Beauty LLC's peer support initiative.
With all sincerity, I second the motion, and thank you for it.
Great, and thank you for those comments, Commissioner, and for the second, Commissioner Van Winkle. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. Is there a second motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would move to approve a request to approve the distribution of $226,647.76 opioid settlement infrastructure grant to Hard Beauty.
I will be happy to second.
So once again, we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously as well. Thank you very much for that. So we are at 2:50. I know we're moving on, but before we do that, how about a big round of applause for Hard Beauty and their team? And if it's okay with you all, we'd love to take a photo with you.
I'm glad I was wrong, too.
I went in between some of these.
Oh, yeah, y'all look so welcome.
This is the first time anybody's seen me.
Brand new.
Yeah, it's brand new.
Is everybody here?
Becky, Roger.
I don't think so. We need Valley Hope up there, right?
She's up there.
I'm also a graduate of Valley.
I did, I graduated from Valley.
Three, one, two, three. Do one more here. One, three, one, two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so happy for you.
Okay, trying to move through, so we can move to our land use meeting.